To the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for the May 14, 2024, the first thing is to call to the order to the meeting. Second, please stand up for the place of allegiance. So next, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Dantzler Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Vafadari is absent with excuse. Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four, Public Appellations for Non-Agenda Items or New Appointments or Proclamations. So we have two proclamations tonight. The first one is recognizing National Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as a National Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the calendar week on which May 15 falls as the National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays a special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their life in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others and...
Whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the City of Pittsburgh play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh. The City of Pittsburgh also desires to honor the courage, service, and dedication of its law enforcement officers and...
Whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of the police department, and that members of our police department recognize their commitment to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression and intimidation and...
Whereas the police department of the City of Pittsburgh has grown to be a professional and progressive law enforcement agency that unceasingly provides a vital public service.
Now, therefore, I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, along with the Pittsburgh City Council, do now call upon all citizens of Pittsburgh and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10 to 16 of 2024 as a police week in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibility, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and, in doing so, have established for themselves an enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens.
Salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation, and I encourage citizens of the City of Pittsburgh to observe May 15 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have lost their lives or have become disabled and performant of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2024.
Okay, thank you. So before we go, we take the picture, Dave Shaw wants to... He wishes to speak about Police Week. So they... Who else? Do we have another one?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, and Alders. Thank you for your time. I would just say amen to that proclamation. Beautifully done. Thank you. I wanted to personally come here today and say thank you to Chief Morales and the men and women in blue, many of them here. I view... I always get a kick out of it's Police Week or Memorial Day or Veterans Day. I look at all of those things as it should be that every day because I get up every morning, every day, and pray for our veterans, our police, all of everybody, Gold Star families. So I don't think a day should go by that we do not thank them, but thank you for the beautiful proclamation. Without them, we don't have our safety and security. They provide for us to have a thriving community. So thanks for your service, dedication, loyalty, and support of our safety and security. I've gotten to know some of you over the last several months here on the police station issue, and appreciate getting to know you, Dave particularly, and Jim Wheeler. I know you guys are very supportive of the police. I thank you for that. I've got... I don't know a lot of you yet, but I hope to get to know many of you through becoming a little more politically active in the City of Pittsburgh. I've lived here for 32 years. I live at 5788 Ivanhoe Circle, proud member of this community, and thank you for your service, and thank you, you men and women, Chief Morales, for all you do. Appreciate it.
Chief, you want to say some words?
Yes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Just want to say a couple more words and add on to what Mr. Shaw indicated, what this week is all about. It's memorializing the officers that made the ultimate sacrifice for this profession. It is interesting that May you have Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and you also have Memorial Weekend. It's those of us that have taken the time to take a job that is to serve others. If any of you ever decide to take a trip to Washington, DC, or on a week like this, you would really understand what it means to take an oath and to do a job such as this. It's very humbling. I've made it out there several times during this week. There's also, you know, there's several different memorials out there in Washington, but it puts things in perspective at how easy it is to be here today and gone tomorrow and doing it for someone else. I encourage our sworn staff here in Pittsburgh to do that. And Mayor, this is the second year that you have a proclamation for this week, and I thank you for that because it is something that our sworn here at Pittsburgh need to see is that support from you, the support from our city, and to really, you know, again, bring it back to what this is all about. So thank you very much, Mayor, for doing this.
Thank you. Gracias. So you're fine today, guys. Okay. So I want to say thank you very much for, you know, for serving our city, and I appreciate your work. If I don't say enough, I want to tell you that I really appreciate your work every day. So thank you. Muchas gracias. Okay, so our second proclamation is recognizing May as a National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages expanded rapidly and...
Whereas the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country and...
Whereas today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations and...
Whereas as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, DC, National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislation solutions to support municipalities as work closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation and...
Whereas local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents with the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world and...
Whereas from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in the world history and...
Whereas Pittsburgh was incorporated in 1983 and is proudly serving today by nine elected officials and a municipal workforce of 186 dedicated public servants.
So now, therefore, it resolved that I, Julio Ratafratta, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, along with the Common Council, do now proclaim May 2024 as a National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in celebration of American local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary. This is proclaimed this 14th day of May of 2024. So, okay, so we don't have anyone here, so we are going to take the whole picture, the whole council? Oh, do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just... This should be corrected because we are served by 10 elected officials.
No, nine.
No, we have a municipal judge.
Yeah. No, but they say a municipal... Oh, yeah, true. Yeah, okay.
So that should be corrected.
Okay, so now we are in item number five, the consent agenda. I need a motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. There we go.
So all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Oh, we have a lot of them. Okay. So next, we move to the... Where is an administrative report?
Good evening, everyone. Got about a half a dozen items for you this evening. First one, couple events. Kids Building Wisconsin event is being held at McKee Farms Park this Saturday. That is probably the most well-attended, or I guess significantly-attended, event now in the City of Pittsburgh, surpassing what used to be the Burby Derby and is now the Birdie Derby. We're estimating approximately 10,000 people will be visiting McKee Farms Park on Saturday to learn a bit more about our construction trades. I know our police... I'm sorry, our fire department and our building inspection department will be present as well to be able to interact with those who are in attendance about careers with the city in those particular fields. Next one, our splash pad is opening May 24. We have a change in hours this year in that we will be open prior to Memorial Day, or at least on Memorial Day weekend, and open through Labor Day weekend. That is a change from prior years, and funding was provided in this year's operating budget to staff those additional two weekends. So hopefully, the weather is nice and permits lots of use of the splash pad. As I mentioned, I think at the last council meeting, the resurfacing project was anticipated to begin last week. Some weather and a couple other things, I think, hampered a little bit of work there, but I noticed that a number of roads in our rural area were milled last week, and resurfacing is beginning this week, starting with Seminole Highway. The assessing department has completed its revaluation of property this year. If you'll recall, there was just a maintenance year in 2023, so values generally stayed the same from 2022, which was the last time a full revaluation was done in the city. Approximately 9,200 assessment notices will be placed in the mail on Friday. 9,200. So there will obviously be a number of letters and notices hitting the U.S. Postal Service this weekend. While there is, of course, some variability by neighborhood and parcel, the average single-family home value is increasing approximately 20%, and commercial property is increasing just under 20%. If you'll recall, the average single-family home is currently valued at approximately $381,900, and the new average single-family home value will be $461,800. The average rental unit was previously valued at $115,400 and will be increasing to $121,900. I do just want to remind folks that changes in assessed value do not necessarily equate specifically to what the local property tax amount will be. That is obviously dependent upon what the Common Council elects to approve in the upcoming operating budget, and the tax rates are what is used to base the local share of the property tax. And through the budget process, obviously, the council's approval of a budget will determine what the tax rate will be. For those that recall when the last revaluation was two years ago, the budget that was passed by the Common Council, even though there was an approximate 20% change in the residential assessments for a number of single-family residences, the city's share of the portion of the property taxes was generally flat that year. So just when you do get calls about that, please just, as difficult as it may be, remind folks that it's based on tax rates, and that'll be established later this fall during the budget process. If you do have questions about the assessment process or the notices that are going out, I encourage you to reach out to Chris Leetz, our city assessor. He's certainly much more well-versed in the assessment process than I am, and he'll be happy to answer those questions. I'll just pause before I move on to my last two items, in case anybody has any questions there. Next item, the strategic planning process, as you know, has been underway for a few weeks here. I want to thank all the department heads and elected officials who were able to join us at last week's workshop. I thought it was quite a productive conversation. We've also, I think the consultant has completed at least two of the focus groups with community and business members. That was done last week as well, and there'll be a forthcoming online survey that will be available for community members to complete as well. And anything else you want me to add there at all? Adam? No? Got it covered? Excellent. And then finally, the last item is the Moody's Investors Service was in today. We are in the process of issuing debt that was approved at one of our recent council meetings, and as part of that debt issuance, Moody's obviously will update their rating of the city's, I guess, bond rating, for lack of a better way of saying that. Greg from Ellers is nodding in affirmation, so thank you, Greg. We did something a little bit unique this year in that the Moody's team came in to the city in person. The last several times we've done it, it has been virtually, and it was a nice opportunity for them to come into the city. We did a presentation for them in regards to the city's financial policies and current picture, and then we had a tour of the city with the Moody's team, our consultants from Ellers, and city staff. So we did about a 90-minute tour throughout various areas of the city to show them all that is happening here in the city. I think it was very well-received. They had a lot of positive comments, and we look forward to hearing from them in the next two to three weeks in regards to what their findings were. But I do want to thank, obviously, our consultants from Ellers for helping support us through this process, and then, of course, Mike and Joyce in our Economic Development Department, and Misty in our Finance Department for all the work that they put in behind the scenes, putting this together and not just for the presentation portion of it. And it was also a nice opportunity. The mayor was able to join us this morning for the presentation to Moody's. Unfortunately, another commitment didn't allow you to make the tour, but it was a good presentation overall, so thanks to everyone who was able to participate. That's all I got.
Thank you, and I want to mention that I was very, you know, I want to say that thank you to you, Chad, and Misty and Mike. The presentation was very professional, and I am very impressed with you did this morning, so thank you. I think it's a great presentation if you, some of the council members want to see it, maybe Mycon can share with you, but because there is a very good information in that presentation that maybe you can use, you know, where you're constituents or learn more about the city. But so I want to say thank you, guys. You know, great job today, so... Okay, so next, we move to Commission and Committee reports. So we will start with Plan Commission.
I will move approval of Ordinance 2024-07 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0524, adopting the spring 2024 amendment to the Comprehensive Plan, Amending MAP 4.3 Future Land Use Plan MAP and text on pages 4 to 17 to incorporate a new medium-high-density residential, MHDR, land use category, and amend the text of page 4 through 17 of that plan for the high-density residential, HDR, future land use category, and this was postponed from April 9.
Second.
Okay, so did the Plan Commission approve?
Plan approved.
Can you explain what it is, Gabriela? And Deanna is also here to help you.
Yeah, I'll just get a quick overview. Basically, this is, we have three categories in the city right now. We have low density, medium density, and high density. That does not necessarily reflect... Well, the thing with high density is it goes basically to infinity once you hit high density, and so there are a lot of developments kind of that we would like to have in the medium-high, somewhere in between medium and high density. And so creating this type of zoning would allow us to encourage those types of developments and also limit the amount of units that could be placed on a piece of property that's really not intended for super-high density. And this really like kind of plays to what is termed middle housing in housing. Like, we're missing kind of that type, those types of units that fit in that medium-high-density category typically in housing, generally, but also especially in Dane County and in the City of Pittsburgh. So this will hopefully run into that. And we had some concerns at the Plan Commission about how this rolls out with current high-density spaces, because now, right now, I believe they're nine to 15, nine-plus units per acre, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Deanna, is high-density, and what happens to those parcels? Are they only 15-plus now? And so I don't know if we've resolved that from a staff perspective, Deanna, but hoping you could jump in now.
One second. Oh, sorry.
We didn't resolve that. You'll notice in the...
Oh, no, I want to say that, I want to ask a question to Gabriela because it was a proven plan, but it was amended, so, you know, so you're moving the...
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I move it... Can I clarify? I moved it as amended in plan.
What was the amendment?
Yeah.
Plan Commission recommended, I'll read it. Plan Commission recommended at February 20, 2024, meeting to postpone the item to March 19 to allow for re-noticing. At March 19, Plan Commission approved with the condition that the resolution at ordinance be amended to allow properties designated as HDR prior to council adoptions of the amendment be allowed to retain rights to develop property at nine housing units per acre or greater as currently designated in the comp plan. And it's in red in the comp plan amendment.
Okay, Deanna, would you like to add?
Yeah, so, no, I think you're spot on. You'll notice in the ordinance, then, we just put a special note in there that will be in the comp plan that properties designated as HDR prior to today's date shall retain their right to request development at a density of nine housing units, units per acre, as previously allowed. So we're not going to take away anyone's rights, and it will just allow us to have that middle range of density.
Okay. Jay?
Yeah, I, my main, I have a bunch of questions on this, but the main one is, how did we arrive at 15 dwelling units per acre as the cutoff?
It's in the memo.
And the reason I'm asking that question is because there's a whole bunch of single-family lots that are in Terre Vessa that are built at a density of greater than that. That's basically a 20, it's, at 15 dwelling units, you're looking at about 2,900 square feet, and there are a lot of single-family lots in Terre Vessa that are, that are smaller than 2,900 square feet, and I don't think anybody would rationally conclude that Terre Vessa is high-density. So I think that's a, that's, I think 15 units is the wrong number. I liked the 20 units, and I thought that's what we were going to work off of. So I would be in favor of putting both of the, putting the high-density to 20 units or greater. I mean, I live, I live in an apartment building that's on a 1.2-acre lot, and there's 54 units there, so that's about 44 units per acre, and I guess you could call that high-density if you want to. I mean, it's a three-story apartment building. It seems, you know, in comparison to other things, it doesn't seem that high. But, but, you know, at some point, we have to decide which direction we're going to go here, and this seems to be a direction that's attempting to lower density across the board, which I don't think is the right direction.
Deanna, can you explain the logic behind it?
Yes, I can. So all of the townhomes and smaller single-family lots in Terre Vessa, they, the maximum is actually just under 15 dwelling units per acre. That would be T4, and so our number of 15 was the T4 in Terre Vessa, which is the vast majority of the single-family lots in Terre Vessa are T4.
So T4 is a smart code for the New Orleans?
Right.
Yep, it's smart code. Sorry.
But that doesn't, that doesn't really apply to this because this is not, this is comp plan designations. This doesn't have anything to do with smart code.
No, it isn't, I guess, but what we're just, we thought that the 15 was a good cutoff as a way to explain the type of density and to help people understand what that means for the 15. So it was a reasonable cutoff that staff found that was very clear, very in the ground. We could easily say this is what topping out at 15 looks like.
So would staff feel that 20 is unreasonable?
No, I mean, I think that you can make the argument that any number, whether it's 14 or 16 or 20, is somewhat arbitrary. There was just at least a level of consistency with our smart code designations.
I get that, but I really think that there's a problem taking all of the currently designated HDR areas in our comp plan and lowering the density by five units per acre.
Oh, no, 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 we're not changing the map at all. All of the high-density in the current map stays exactly how it is right now. We're not changing any, any designations on any properties with this. We're just creating a new category.
Well, but we are changing it because right now, our high-density residential is 20 dwelling units per acre, and this says it's going to be 15 dwelling units per acre.
No, it's nine.
No, it's nine right now. Yeah. It's nine right now, and it will continue for everything that's currently designated high-density may continue at nine.
The actual verbiage in the comp plan, I looked it up earlier today, says high-density residential...
residential is, quote, 'expected to be over nine dwelling units per acre.'"
Okay, well.
I can, I can see why you're surprised, because nine is a very small number.
Well, I'm further surprised. I think it must be our high-density zoning classification that's twenty dwelling units per acre or more. We've been talking about twenty, we've been talking about twenty dwelling units per acre for a long time.
No, no, it's nine plus. Maybe you're confused with a smart code? I don't know.
No, a smart code doesn't really designate things that way.
Deanna, can you confirm what the current high-density residential is?
It doesn't specify dwelling units per acre. It instead has certain requirements for open space. So, there isn't an actual designation in our zoning in terms of dwelling units per acre. In smart code, there is, T-five has no top-line limit. T-four for the, for Terre Vessa is fourteen-point-nine or something like that. It's just under the fifteen.
Okay, so.
All right, well.
What is your?
Regardless of all that discussion, I guess I want to make an amendment to change the, because I do think we should be encouraging higher density. So, I would like to make an amendment that will change the, this medium-high-density residential to nine to twenty housing units per acre and to change the high-density residential to twenty units per acre or more. So, there's a motion. If someone would please second it, that would be great. Or if you want to let it die, that's fine, too.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I just want to clarify, Deanna, you have only referred out a change to, or an inclusion of a new classification of medium-high-density. There's been nothing referred out on a change to high-density itself, correct?
No, actually, the, it is in the, it is in the ordinance that high-density, future designations of high-density would start at fifteen. The current areas and current properties already designated as high-density residential would have no impact.
So, to confirm, you have already, in the packet, you have a change to high-density residential, the current high-density residential to add fifteen. So, all their Allen's amendment would simply change that number to twenty in what's already been referred out.
Okay.
This is correct.
Okay, so I have another question. If we change it to, the council approved to twenty, because it's an amendment to the comp plan, does it have to go back to Plan Commission for approval? Because it's an amendment to the comp plan. This is the process, isn't it?
No.
Yes, it probably should.
Well, we can re-refer to Plan Commission if that makes you more comfortable.
No, this is, I think this is a rule, you know, it happened in the past.
I would prefer to go back to Plan Commission on it.
Okay. Okay, so, do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, so, Bill.
I had another question. So, the low-density, well, rural residential is less than or equal to one unit per acre. Low-density is listed as two to five, medium is five to nine. Is there a reason that five could be either low or medium density? Or is that, is one of those supposed to be like less than five, and then five and over, or up to five, and then six and over, or over five?
I guess it's written in the, in the ordinance, in the comp plan to have a little bit of flexibility so that it could, my interpretation is there's a little bit of flexibility there.
All right, so that was intentional. I just, I wasn't sure whether that was an oversight or intentional.
I can't speak directly to that. That was not.
Okay, so, any other question regarding Jay, you know, amendment? Okay, Gabriela.
I don't have, necessarily have an issue with increasing the density. I was just, I just typically trust staff's assessment, and I would love Deanna's thoughts about, about this change and what the potential implications would be.
I don't know if I could speak a whole lot of details here.
I just would like staff input, I guess, before I make a decision.
Well, here is what I would suggest, just because I want to see this change happen. I think we should vote on this amendment. Hopefully, it passes, and then we can re-refer it to Plan Commission as the next action. And then, at Plan Commission, staff will have time to work out some of that before Plan Commission votes on it, and then it can come back here.
I think it's a good plan. Okay. Okay, so, so we're going to vote in the, in the amendment. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the amendment carries.
All right, so I will move to re-refer the amended version of this to Plan Commission.
Second.
Any question about that? No?
One question, will it go to Plan Commission next week?
Oh.
I guess that's up to the person who runs the Plan Commission agenda.
I mean, we can clarify later. I'm just curious if it's.
Let me just clarify later with the city attorney, just to make sure that we've covered all our bases.
Okay, so, but we are referring back this to Plan, yeah. All of us in favor to referring back this amendment to the ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So, now we need to vote on the.
No, we just re-referred it.
Okay, okay, good. I like that. Okay, thank you. Okay, so, next one, Gabriela.
Just a moment while I get this up. There's a lot of things on the agenda. I move approval of Resolution R-7224 and Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0624, creating TID incremental district number eighteen, approving its project plan and establishing its boundaries, City of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin. And Plan Commission Resolution PCR-0624, resolution establishing the boundaries of and approving the project plan for TID increment district number eighteen.
Second.
The Plan Commission, did Plan Commission approve this?
Plan Commission approved.
Okay, so we are missing Plan Commission here. And did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, do you want Greg to explain this, Gabriela?
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it to the experts.
Okay, all yours.
Thank you, good evening. So, just to give a quick recap of the TID creation process that's required by statute, the first step is the convening of the Joint View Board, which consists of all the other taxing jurisdictions, county, school district, technical college, and a public member. They held an organizational meeting, no action was taken. Then, the next step is required public hearing that occurred before the Plan Commission on April sixteenth. They recommended approval of the TID district number eighteen, which is a requirement. We're at the next step, which is here before the Common Council for your consideration. Your approval is required by statute as well. And then, if the Common Council approves the creation of the district, it'll go back to the Joint View Board for their final consideration on May thirtieth. Just to quickly recap how a tax caramel finance district works, when a TID district is created, all of the properties within the boundary of the district have an existing taxable value. In the case of TID district number eighteen, the base value of this district will be as of January first of 2024. So, all of the taxing jurisdictions will continue to collect their share of tax revenue on that existing value, just like they do presently. When the value increases due to appreciation or redevelopment or development activities within the TID district, that increase in value of the base value is called the incremental value, and the city retains all of the tax revenue that's generated from that incremental value, the city's share, school district, county, and technical college share, and uses that tax revenue to help pay for expenses to help promote development and redevelopment within the district. Whether you're in a TID district or outside a TID district, you pay the same tax rate, it's just where that tax revenue goes. So, again, the, all the taxing jurisdictions continue to collect their share of taxes on that value that's there prior to the district being created. That incremental value is where that financial benefit is to the city, that you keep all of that tax revenue from each taxing jurisdiction. So, really, a TID district is a partnership between the city and all the other taxing jurisdictions who are agreeing to forego their share of tax revenue on that new development until such time that the TID district closes. Next, we'll speak to the legal requirements to create a tax caramel finance district. One of the tests is called the twelve percent valuation test. And what that means is the base value of the proposed district that you're creating plus the incremental value of all the city's existing TID districts, those two numbers combined cannot exceed twelve percent of the city's total equalized value. So, when we take the incremental value of the existing districts plus the existing value of properties within TID district number eighteen, the city would be at five-point-seven percent of value in, towards that twelve percent test. So, what that means is the city still has capacity to create new districts or add territory to districts if determined necessary. In terms of TID district number eighteen, we've included kind of the map that was identified in the project plan. This is really identified as an area to help remediate a former quarry site. This is a rehabilitation TID district, which means at least fifty percent of the area within the TID district means the statutory definition of an area in need of rehabilitation. We'll speak more in a moment about some of the infrastructure improvements that have been identified to facilitate development, redevelopment within this proposed boundary. And there's also an allowance for development incentives, so the city deem it necessary to incentivize developers or reimburse cost developers incur to develop within the district. There are several parcels proposed within TID district number eighteen that are presently included within TID district number nine. Those are the parcels highlighted in purple on the map. Parcels cannot be located within two TID districts simultaneously under state law. So, when you're incorporating property into a new district, that's called an overlay district. So, those parcels that are presently in TID nine will become part of TID district number eighteen, meaning any development activity that occurs in those parcels, that incremental value will go to TID eighteen instead of TID district number nine. So, it kind of also starts the clock over on those parcels. So, those parcels in purple, being part of TID district number eighteen, will have a twenty-seven-year maximum life to correspond with, with the balance of the district.
Could, could I just ask a quick question? How much time is left in TID nine?
TID nine, I believe, was a twenty-year district, so.
Yeah, and it was created in two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, industrial TID district, so we're, I'm doing this from memory. I think we're at least five years into that district, if I'm doing.
So, are we gonna, are we gonna go through the process of closing that district, or how does that work?
Not, not at this time. So, that district will remain open until such time that the district has generated sufficient value to recover its expenses. Since most of these parcels that are presently in TID nine have not seen any, you know, meaningful development activity, it's really not going to impact, you know, the present fiscal health of TID nine. That'll continue to remain open and cover its obligations. In terms of the specific findings that were made in consultation with staff on the rehabilitation finding, again, at least fifty percent of the area of the district has to meet the statutory definition of an area in need of rehabilitation. As was mentioned, several of the parcels are a former quarry site to be remediated to a higher land use, and those are the primary parcels that were identified as meeting the rehabilitation criteria. One of that criteria is it requires the installation, construction, or reconstruction of streets, utilities, parks, or other improvements necessary to carry out an objective of an urban renewal project. And so, really, the need for infrastructure within those particular areas, particularly for the former quarry sites, is kind of what satisfies the rehabilitation criteria. So, about sixty-six percent of the area of the entire district has been identified as in need of rehabilitation, which is in excess of the minimum requirement of fifty percent.
I have a question on that page. There is a parcel that belonged to the City of Pittsburgh. Which one is that one? In the map?
I think that's the one with the water tower on it.
Water, oh, okay.
Would it not be the water tower?
I thought it was a parcel that was adjacent to the mountain bike path there. I think there's a parcel adjacent to that.
Number seven?
No, well, according to this map, the water tower site is not included in the TID.
No, it's number seven. I can see, go, go.
No, the water, the water tower is in that parcel that's in the center of this. There's a parcel in the center that is not part of the TID. That's where the water tower is.
It's the one adjacent to the mountain bike.
Yeah, the number seven. Okay, I get it. Okay, I found it. Okay.
So, within the project plan, we've identified some specific infrastructure projects and provided allowances for development incentives as eligible project costs within the district. There's also narrative that's included in the project plan that generally describes what types of expenses are eligible to be repaid by TID districts. So, the plan is written to give the city flexibility, certainly to undertake, you know, the specific projects that have been identified, but also to reallocate those funds to other projects if other, if some of the projects are deemed unnecessary or don't move forward, or you can undertake some of the other projects generally described in the narrative if priority change, change over time. Any development incentive that is offered under state statute requires a development agreement to be approved by the Common Council. And then, we've also identified costs for ongoing city audit costs, TID reporting, and legal reviews. It's important to note that approval of a project plan for a TID district does not formally commit the city to undertake any of the project costs that are identified in the project plan. The approval of a TID district just identifies what are TID eligible expenses. All the projects still require typical approval by the Common Council. So, any street improvement project needs to go through a normal approval process. Any borrowing that would be necessary for a TID process, a TID project has to go through the normal financing process. So, it just identifies what is a TID eligible expense. The city has a strong practice of managing its TID districts to evaluate whether or not projects need TID support. That will continue for this TID district as well. And that's important, always remember that just because a project is TID eligible, identified in the project plan, doesn't mean it's TID feasible until there's sufficient increment and development to support the cost. So, the key to successful TID management is to match the pace of investment, incurring of costs within the district, to the pace of development that's going to generate incremental value to generate tax revenue to pay for those projects. In terms of that detailed project list, there's some infrastructure improvements, utility improvements, road improvements, some regional stormwater improvements as well, some trail improvements, some bus shelter improvements, some signage improvements, and then allowances for development incentives as determined by the city, and then interest for long-term debt for any projects that might be financed. So, the total amount of project costs that have been identified are approximately thirty-seven million, and then there are specific projects that fall within a half-mile radius of the TID boundary that are also TID eligible expenses if they are specifically identified in the project plan. So, again, this is kind of the menu, kind of the laundry list of projects that the city can choose to implement as necessary. It just, again, identifies what is TID eligible, your choice to implement and undertake these projects all come as the district is managed and implemented going forward. So, this is the map that was included in the project plan. Each of the projects has an identification number that identifies where the projects are located. So, this just provides a, a map to show where the proposed improvements will occur, which is a requirement of the project plan. So, in terms of the financial analysis of what's been included in the project plan, this is very much a, kind of an illustration of the potential full build-out potential of the district. Staff has had conversations with landowners and potential developers within the district to get a feel for what types of projects could be proposed within the district, and then we've modeled that out for phased construction over the life of the district. So, again, this is very much an illustration. The city evaluates the performance of its TID districts annually and certainly before financial commitments are made to make sure that the increment is sufficient to support those investments. But based on those initial conversations, the potential incremental value could be as much as a hundred fifty-five million. If that hundred fifty-five million- If that $155 million of value is achieved over the 27-year life of the TIP district, the estimated tax revenue that would be generated is approximately $48.3 million. So the cash flow model that I'll summarize in a moment is just kind of an illustration of that full build-out. Based on that methodology, the projected closure is in 2046. So staff identified on each parcel within the district kind of some potential development that could occur. So this chart represents the increase in taxable value for the TIP district in each of the parcels. So this is how that $155 million of incremental value is derived, so kind of phased construction over the life of the district. Again, this is really just an illustration that shows the potential of what development could occur within the district. Then that incremental value over 27 years, again, could result in about $48.3 million of tax revenue. That's the revenue stream to pay for eligible expenses. So the cash flow projection is just, again, an illustration of financially what could be supported within the district. You have that tax revenue coming in from the tax increment. We show potential financing of infrastructure improvements as that increment becomes available. And then there are what are called municipal revenue obligations or developer incentives that could be offered as well. The city's general practice is to provide development incentives on what's called a pay-as-you-go basis, meaning that as tax increment is generated from a particular development, a portion of that increment can go to reimburse developers for various costs that were deemed necessary for their particular development. The benefit of a pay-go arrangement is that if the increment's not sufficient to pay the developer back their full incentive, the city is under no financial obligation to make up that shortfall. So it kind of diverts some of the risk onto the developer to only get their incentive repaid in full if their project generates enough value to do so. And then finally, we show some potential cash funding of capital outlay projects, and then ongoing planning and administrative costs. So again, this is an illustration just of what could occur within the district and shows potential closure by 2046. So to summarize, TIP 18, a rehabilitation TIP district, 27-year maximum life, includes some specific public infrastructure improvements that the city can undertake within the district, also allowances for development incentives. The plan is written with flexibility in mind to give the city to react to certain development proposals as they come forward, reallocate project costs between those projects listed, or undertake other TIP eligible expenses if there's remaining expenditure authority within the district. So I'll pause here and let staff speak to maybe some of the specific development proposals that may come forth more in the near term.
Sure. Mike Zimmerman, Economic Development Director for the city of Fitchburg. This is an important opportunity for us to reclaim some of the former quarries in the city of Fitchburg and bring us some good industrial land for light industrial and clean manufacturing, and not only for new business prospects, but also for some of our existing businesses. So the first project out of the gate will be the Sub-Zero Corporate Conference Center, which will be on the lot north of the barn. They're anxiously awaiting, hopefully, TIP creation, May 30th, to bring that project forward to us. And then the second one is our friends at General Beverage are finishing up their headquarters expansion right now. And once they finish that, they'll evaluate kind of the timing of when they move forward with the warehouse distribution operation on a lot that they purchased from Payne and Dolan just south of Cottonwood, a seven-acre lot there. So this is an important economic development tool and an initiative to bring us some good inventory of industrial land. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg and Mike. Any question? Okay, Jay, and then Nicole.
Oh, she's here. Look at that. I have, I don't know, because you didn't show this page up there, but it was page 11 of the project plan, which shows, basically, it says existing uses and conditions. Is this map showing us what the actual zoning is there right now? Or is this just saying how the land is being used?
It's how the land is presently being used. So that's one of the required maps that has been included in the project plan. You show existing land uses, and then you show proposed future land use based off of anticipated development within the district.
Sure. So then I was, so then moving on to something completely different. If we end up having more increment than expected, which our TIPs generally do, would it be, you know, I'm looking at this half mile, these half-mile radius things, and I wonder, would we be able to use money from this TIP to widen the, the, right widen Fitchroona Road underneath 18151, where we've talked about maybe needing to go to four lanes there? Or would we be able to do something more substantive with the constant flooding issues that are happening over there?
One second.
Public Works is working with the town of Roanoke, DNR, Dane County, I think, Madison, Metropolitan Sewerage District on some possible solutions to the flooding issue and increasing some discharge abilities of Goose Lake. I would anticipate something coming to fruition about the same time Fitchroona Road is reconstructed.
Well, my, my question is, would we be able to pay for some of that through this TIP if the, if there's enough increment there? Because it's showing it, it's showing that area within the half-mile.
So if you, the half-mile radius costs are required to be spelled out specifically within the project plan. So if you are in position where the district has some excess increment and you can demonstrate that a project that falls within a half-mile radius accomplishes the overall objectives of the district, or a portion of accomplishes the objectives of the district, you can always amend the plan to identify those as eligible expenses. So projects within the district, you have a little more flexibility, but half-mile radius projects specifically require approval by the joint view board, which is why we identify them separately in the plan.
Got you. All right.
Okay, thank you. Nicole, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Apologies for my tardiness. My three-year-old decided to get real brave on his bike and got in a fight with the pavement and lost. So just coming from the emergency room, he's fine, but... So I, I wanted to understand a bit more. You mentioned light industrial and clean manufacturing. Can you just give a couple examples of what types of businesses those might be and what that designation means?
Sure. Yeah, I think in our zoning classification, some specific examples would be the Sub-Zero, you know, buildings would be light manufacturing. Aseris is another one. General Beverage, you know, as well, the warehouse distribution. So we're not looking at heavy industry, you know, or things that negatively kind of impact the surrounding neighborhood and everything. So those are kind of some examples of existing businesses that would be similar to what we would be looking for in this area.
Awesome, thank you.
Dave?
Mike, has any environmental assessment been done? You know, quarries, quarries, things like that, a lot of times you get into it, and then if there's been, you know, been contamination, next thing they're after the, oh, we can't, it's gonna cost us too much, and then they're after the city to remediate it. And so has any of that assessment, assessment been done? I want to make sure we're not, we're not caught in the middle of that. And, you know, the only way it can move forward is if, you know, the city handies up.
My understanding is each of the quarries have a reclamation plan to bring it back to a certain level of remediation there. So I, I don't, I'm not aware of the environmental studies done as part of that, but that's the expectation or requirement, you know, of their quarry reclamation plan is to bring it back. So that would be at their expense, you know, to do that.
Thank you.
Any other, oh, any other comment? Questions? No? Okay, so all those in favor of resolution R-72-24, and blank commission resolution PCR-06-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Greg. So next, we move to public, Board of Public Works.
Second here, my computer. Computer fell asleep on me here. I know, man, beta. So I move approval of resolution R-4624, oh, I'm sorry, I'm up too far. Hang on. Go up a little farther. I move approval of resolution R-1124 approving contract with Synthes for uniform, towel, and mat services for Public Works facility and crews. This has been postponed from April 23rd, but I believe Public Works approved it about a year ago.
Second.
So did the Board of Public Works approve?
That's correct.
Did the Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this?
Well, we, you know, we have both our uniforms, as our uniforms get worn out or damaged, they're able to, they manage the cleaning and repair of these. And then we also have, you know, the mats and rugs and towels in the facility that Synthes takes care of. So this is, I believe, Chad, a three-year, three-year contract.
Yeah. Any question, comments? Okay, all those in favor of resolution R-11-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so next, we move to Park Commission.
So just two things. First one, we're continuing to work through issues with the Southdale, Southdale Park, you know, was discussed quite a bit at Parks Commission last time, and I believe will continue, continue to discuss this. Scott Endel, do you want anything to add on that?
Nothing to add, Dave. Yeah, we'll continue to, to work through the, the park development process, including receiving information or feedback from the neighborhood on what they would like to see in, in the park.
Okay, thank you, Scott. The second thing was, we reviewed the, the grant application, Manaheli Working, the people, the grant for the urban forestry canopy restoration. And we're applying for a grant up to $170,000 to reforest underserved neighborhoods. So they, we reviewed that, reviewed that grant, and we're hopeful that we would, we would get that. Well, that's, that's all I had on parks.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Library Board?
Next meeting is tomorrow at 5:30.
Okay, thank you. Commission of Agent Will?
That was the, the first meeting I had that we had last week. And we kind of was just introductory meeting. And Ms. Janice Hughes talked about some of the upcoming events that they're going to have at the Senior Center, including a couple lunches and things like that, that you can see on the website for those dates that are upcoming for Agent Will. One of them is gonna be a cool event, the CEO of Culvers will be in town. And they're gonna have a lunch over at the Senior Center, and they will be distributing tickets for individuals to like get free Culvers for, for that event. And then they, they talked about some of the other events that they're gonna have in terms of like lunch and learns at the Senior Center.
Okay, good.
Oh, and they thanked everyone for the pancake breakfast. It was a good turnout. We served a lot, a lot of individuals, and the residents were happy to come through and, and interact with the council and other members who were there.
Okay, thank you. RCC?
RCC met last night. We spent the bulk of our time discussing the draft RFP for the solid waste collection contract.
For what?
Solid waste collection.
Oh.
Yeah. Then we also talked about some events, one that happened last week, Pollinator Palooza. And that video is online, and Chris highly recommends we watch that. Coming up on May 22nd, RCC will have a booth at the Promega Employee Services Fair. On June 12th, at the library, there'll be an event called EV 101. So there'll be a little class on electric vehicles, presentation, and then I guess I'm not sure if this is gonna be in the, in the underground parking or, or outside. It may be dependent on the weather, but there will be, several residents will bring their electric vehicles and, and do a little show and tell.
When is that date? Can you repeat?
June 12th.
Oh.
And we may or may not be doing another Bring Your Own Bag event. So if you remember last year, you could bring your own shopping bag to Pick 'n Save, and, and RCC members were present there. They had a little presentation telling you about the, you know, plastic disposal and whatnot. And if you brought your own bag, they would give you a coupon for some kind of a treat, maybe a ice cream cone or something. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So next, we move to transportation and transit.
Remember me?
Yes.
We met yesterday. And we discussed the, the Bus Rapid Transit locally preferred alternative for the North-South Route, termed Rapid Route B, which will have, you know, 15-minute service during the day, 30 minutes in the early morning and, and evening hours, nothing between midnight and 5:00 AM. Currently, the southern terminus is, is planned for Triverton Pike, just south of McKee Road. And we're told that if we were to extend that down to the Civic Campus, that could jeopardize some of our, some of the grant funding for the, for the North-South line, because there's not enough, there's not enough residential density along that portion of the line.
You need to move the resolution.
I'm sorry. Holy cow, yes. I move approval of resolution R-8624, approving the locally preferred alternative for the Bus Rapid Transit North-South Corridor.
Second.
Okay, I have a question. So the question is, you mentioned that if we want to extend it, when? When is the, the grant is gonna be in jeopardy? If we do it at the same time, or we suppose that we say, okay, we do the extension to McKee, and then we, you know, in five years, we decided to do the extension? So we can do that if we want?
Yeah, I don't know if you remember any details about that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the problem is that the network, the timing of it is all, because it's a network that goes all the way to the other side of Madison. So I think adding on a stop at a later date is challenging from, from their perspective. And the, the Triverton Pike endpoint is gonna be a charging station for the electric vehicles. So if we did want to extend it, we would also have to probably extend the, the charging. So it's not, I, I almost say it's impossible, but I think there's gonna be strong, to be honest, I think there's gonna be strong resistance to extending the BRT beyond that point. But, and I can't remember if we discussed this already, but we've, we've, they have talked about extending a couple of lines that will also end at the, at the Triverton Pike station, so that we can connect service to the city through other bus routes.
Yeah, but you need to do a transfer.
Yes, yes, absolutely. But the benefit of that is that you can actually have connection broader throughout the city. So yeah, there's downsides, but there's also upsides in that people would, that service would be extended throughout all those, getting people to that Bus Rapid Transit.
So we're, we're talking about expanding the, the 75 that runs to the west and the 65 that goes through the Civic Campus, but only, you know, currently during, you know, the morning and evening commute. So this would provide an east-west, east-west route, transit route through the city with service throughout the day. And, Mike, we're gonna hold you to this promise.
Yeah, what's, what's said is, is basically correct. Our concern is the overall cost and cost effectiveness of the project in the federal Transit Administration's eyes. The, the cost of the project is kind of approaching what we think will, will put us in a competitive place for funding. We're also concerned about the requirement to run the line every 15 minutes, basically in perpetuity, even though the, the area is not quite ready for that level of service. I think we'd rather see it develop a little bit more, and, and, and then we would, we would develop the BRT line with it. And then, as was mentioned, this expansion of the 65 and 75 service is kind of the first step that could be set up in a way where every other or every fourth Route B trip continues. So it's really not like, you know, some alternative separate thing. It's, 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 it's being done, it would be pretty similar to what we're doing in like Middleton and Sun Prairie, where you're not really getting the full frequency, but you're kind of getting a first step towards BRT in an area that, you know, has no midday service at all right now. So it's, it's taking a little bit more of a, a, a land use appropriate first step towards extending the route. a little bit more of a, a, a land use appropriate first step towards extending the route.
Mike, can you say your name and last name, and who, which organization you represent?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm sorry, I'm Mike Chafalow of Metro Transit. I'm the project manager for North-South BRT.
Okay, so now we want to have your name for the record. Thank you. I have a question here. Joe?
Can I, can I just clarify from what I heard from Mike? So if I understand, right, the BRT would run every 15 minutes, but under the, I guess, suggestion, every hour, one of those buses would go down to City Hall?
It could be set up in a number of different ways. That would be one way to do it, is to have route, have some Route B trips, one of, one out of four or one out of two trips continue. We're also kind of interested in looking at how it would work if the 65 and 75 continued, because that would provide seamless connecting service between the two less frequent routes from West Fitchburg to Central Fitchburg to East Fitchburg, with then a more frequent transfer to Route B to go north. And this, this action today would not go into anywhere near that level of detail. There are a couple different ways that we could set this up, whether you want to favor kind of the North-South movement or the East-West movement, or some kind of different thing. Could be different at different times of the day, too.
Dave?
Two comments. You know, the residents in District 1, you know, don't, their, their bus service is very difficult the way it is. I have a hard time spending, spending all this money to help people on fish hatchery when we have inadequate. This talk of extending to, to the City Hall, we could hire an Uber driver and pay him every day forever and never come close to spending, you know, what it, what it takes. And the third, the whole thing is being financed by federal government borrowing money at a record, there, there, you can all go over the waterfall. I, I would prefer that the federal government get a balanced budget, and then I would, I would support this. But as, currently, they're just printing money to give it to us and driving the inflation and, and also the increase in our home prices. So that's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Any, anyone else? No?
I guess one thing I wanted to add about this is, is this is just like the first step in the process. It's just like basically giving the, the general, like generally where the stop's going to be. Generally, we, we're supporting Bus Rapid Transit as opposed to light rail, another option. So this is very much the first step in the process. It's not allocating revenue. There's a lot more steps to continue on.
Okay. So if, I don't see any more comments. So all those in favor of resolution R-86-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? David opposed. The motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. So next we move to SIDA.
On behalf of the Community and Economic Development Authority, I would move approval of Resolution R-7924, approving a contract between the City of Fitchburg and Sustained Dane to participate and fund the Efficiency Navigator Program with funding from the city's Affordable Housing Fund.
Second.
Did SIDA approve?
We did.
Okay, good. Finance Committee?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this? Jay?
So this is, I'm a little confused as to what exactly we're doing with this right now, but I believe this is to do an assessment of where these naturally occurring affordable housing units might be, so that eventually, once Sustained Dane does a total assessment, they'll start working with those, those people living in those, in those dwelling units to try to bring energy efficiency, things to their units. I, the only reason I'm confused about it is that, looking through it, you know, it's $80,000, which isn't very much and is not going to go very far, even if you're just putting insulation in attics, that's not going to, going to go very far. So I don't, I don't know exactly what we're funding with this, but it's a, it's a start.
I know that, yeah. Joyce Frey is here, and she's going to explain what we are funding. Okay, Joyce, can you explain what we're doing here?
Sure. The $80,000 is actually to contract with Sustained Dane to do the project management part of it only. We will, once the assessments are done and we've determined which properties need what type of improvements, we'll be coming back to the council for approval for doing those improvements. So this is just for the contract management portion and the assessment part, not for doing any energy upgrades. Claire, do you have anything else you want to add? Claire with Sustained Dane is also on, excuse me.
Oh, yes, here. We have Claire Schaefer from Sustained Dane. Claire, hi. Do you want to add anything else?
I think this has been a good summary that Joyce provided. We've been doing this work in Madison and Middleton, so we'll use a similar process. We'll be working with the team to identify buildings, completing assessments, and then have a recommendation of implementation measures, which will include the savings for residents, as well as the savings in carbon that would come out of that, and the cost. And we'll bring that back as part of this contract then for your review and assessment and determination about funding for moving forward with implementation.
I have a question. Do you know when you will be back here with recommendations? When is, what is the timeframe?
We had scoped the project to be a 12-month project in total, so my guess would be, you know, about six to eight months when we would be completing that work and come back to you.
Okay. Jay, we have another question here.
Yeah, so thanks for coming, because I had a whole pile of questions that I wanted to ask, and I didn't have you available. So thank you for being available. How extensive is this assessment that you do? Like, are you, are you going to, is whoever you're hiring, are they going to go up into attics and look at the insulation that's there? Are they going to be looking at like interior lighting? Are they going to be looking at, are they going to get into things like appliances, replacing refrigerators if they're old and inefficient models? Are they going to look into wall insulation? Because a lot of buildings have cellulose insulation that settles, and then you end up with a foot of a void at the top. I mean, how detailed are they going to get in actually looking at these buildings and trying to figure all that out?
Yes to all of that. Our energy assessors have been conducting all of those elements, also looking at, you know, the HVAC equipment, making recommendations. Once that's done, we then go to our technical team, and then we also look at recommendations for moving to potentially air source heat pumps and savings that that could lead to. Part of our, our, our work, once we get, once we hope to get started, is working with Joyce and her team to determine what are the areas that matter to Fitchburg, and what do we want to make sure is included in those assessments. One of the things we talked early on with Joyce is that when our assessors are in these buildings, they'd like us to look at what is the fire suppression that's happening and available in these buildings, because that's another priority that's been talked about. So we're going to work closely with the team to determine what we want to be covered in that assessment, and then use that when we're going into the buildings.
Are you, so there, there's like a lot of the, a lot of the NOAA units in Fitchburg are heated with hot water heat. And that's a, that's an astounding inefficient way to heat, but going, going to install some sort of furnace in, in each of those units is just going to be ungodly expensive, and probably not even workable. I also know that years ago, we, we passed an ordinance that required current property owners to install fire suppression in their buildings, but that ordinance eventually got repealed. We did have a, we did have, we have a couple of buildings that had the, the fire suppression put in as an afterthought, and the cost of that was just enormous to go in and, and do that. So are, are you going to be, once this assessment is done, are you going to be looking at Fitchburg to provide all the funding for the things that you're considering, or are there other funding sources? Are there other grant programs? What else is available for funding to make some of these more expensive things happen if that's the direction we decide to go?
So to answer maybe the first part, historically, in the buildings we've worked in, it's been about $20,000 to about $70,000 in investment that's occurred, and on average, reducing utility bills by about $600. So, you know, we're being, you know, really thoughtful about what are those measures that are going to lead to the most impact for the residents. You know, there are a lot of opportunities for us to braid this with other funding. As Joyce mentioned earlier today with the Finance Committee, we've applied in partnership between City of Madison and Fitchburg, Sustained Dane and others for two federal grants. So there's money there. There's also obviously the incentive, the federal incentives, and having those also be part of any of implementations that we go forward with. I'll probably turn it to Joyce as well. It's about other funding and how she might see this linking with other projects.
So Jay, I just want to maybe reiterate something that wasn't really stated. We're not focusing, we're focusing on the, the smaller units, so like 16 units or less. So we're not going to go into a, you know, you know, a large complex and try and accomplish, you know, a lot of upgrades there. We're really, and probably about a year ago, we took both the Housing Advisory Committee and SIDA out to the four healthy neighborhoods and did an assessment. So we've already identified several properties that are in need of serious work. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we're, you know, we're not going to try and take on a lot. We're going to see what we can do with the money that we have right now. But Claire did mention, you know, some of the programs that we're working on, and we have collaborated with Madison on two pretty significant grants. So hopefully, if we're successful there, we'll be able to use that funding to do more projects, or, you know, to, to fund this, this program, and then maybe do something with the money we set aside to do something else. One thing we have to keep in mind is we have to have a willing property owner. So it's going to be a lot of outreach. I hope that answers your question.
Okay, yes. Nicole, we have another question. Nicole?
Just a quick question. In this assessment, how many hours of work are estimated? I see time spans and payment, but roughly how many hours do we think this work is going to take?
So the, the funding is spread between our organization, as well as our partner organization Elevate, and both of us together make the technical team. So I don't, I don't have in front of me the number of hours. I calculated when we did the initial, initial proposal, and I can certainly bring that back to you. But it's based on the work that we've done for three years with other, with the other municipalities.
So this is a fixed fee agreement. So this says, conduct property assessments, produce reports on six to eight buildings. If we don't get willing landowners, and it takes us three months to get six to eight buildings, that would be in scope of this project, because it's a fixed fee approach, not a time and materials approach?
Yep, correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Dave, and then Bill?
I'm all for energy efficiency. It appears to me, though, we're going to do this, and then you're going to come after the taxpayers to fund these efficiency at privately owned buildings. And I, I think that's, I, I don't agree with that, especially when, you know, we heard, we heard that the average residential homes assessment's going up $80,000. And even though we may hold our tax in the city, pretty sure the Verona School District is going to sock us, and the county has no fiscal responsibility. So I, I have, I have a problem with taking money from taxpayers to fund someone else's property. They're privately owned. I think a different mechanism. But this is where I see it going, is we're going to be coming after our taxpayers to pay for these efficiencies. And you may say, well, we'll get grants. Well, we pay for those grants, whether the federal government borrows it or not. You can't say, oh, that's free money. No, it's not. We're incurring that grant, our, our federal deficit. The interest on the federal deficit was as, as much as our defense spending now. And like I say, I, I think we need to stay compartmentalized and not, not keep going after the taxpayer for, for everything.
Can I make a clarification? The money is coming from the housing fund. It was a TID brochure.
Okay.
So it's not coming from taxpayer money.
And then can I clarify that, too? So the TID district money comes, there is a portion of that would, that would have been attributed to the state, the county, the VOTAC. So it is being spread out, not, not just by Fitchburg taxpayers, but those, those entities as well.
Bill?
Yeah, question for Claire. Do you do energy modeling, like before and after, to show what the improvement is? And then also, like, do you, could you do a, a random sampling of like brand-new constructions, so we can compare, you know, the before, the after, and this is what we currently are doing?
Yes, we do. We do base it on utility data for after. We also model it with what is the industry average for this type of building, and compare where the building currently is to the industry average for that building, and then where we would project it to go with the, with improvements that, that are made. So yeah, there's a lot of technical analysis that goes behind this.
Gabriel?
So, you know, affordable housing is a really complicated issue, but certainly utility costs are a piece of that. For a lot of people, utility costs can be, can drive people out of an apartment building on, onto itself. I support efforts like this. I think it's great. I think my one concern about working with private property owners is how do we ensure that the cost savings go to the residents and not to the landlord? Is there some sort of contract that insists that the benefit go to them, the residents?
So the way we've addressed, yeah, no, great question. And we think about this a lot, too. The way we've addressed this in our other program designs is that we prioritize buildings where the tenants are paying the utility bills, and the owners sign a community benefits agreement, which guarantees for at least five years, they'll maintain the rent at the HUD designated affordable level.
Great, thank you.
Any other question? No? Okay, so I think we are ready to vote. Thank you, Claire. So all those in favor of resolution R-70-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carried. Thank you, Claire and Joyce.
Thank you. We really appreciate your support. This is an important project for, for the city.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. So next we move to Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee.
The next meeting was planned to be next week, May 21, but there's not any active agenda items, so that will be rescheduled to a later date.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission?
Well, I don't know if this will be listed on your mayor's report, but it's Bike to Work Week. There's going to be a meetup at McKee Farms Park on Friday at 7:00 AM, and the mayor will be riding. I'll probably try to stop by. I can't stay for the ride, but
So you want to be sure that I know how to bike?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm there to basically troll you, so.
We should, yes. We should get video of that.
So if, if any citizens or other folks want to join, again, McKee Farms Park, 7:00 AM on Friday.
7:00 AM, oh my lord. Okay. Thank you, Joe. EMS Commission?
Yes, a conditional offer went out to a deputy chief candidate, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you look at it. The background didn't come back positively, so that conditional offer was withdrawn. So stay tuned. The next meeting will be June 13.
So they're going to reopen the search? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Jim. And next we move to Healthy Neighborhood Committee.
On behalf of the Healthy Neighborhoods Committee, I would move approval of Resolution R-4624, approving the grant application and requirements R-46-24, approving the grant application and requirements for the 2004 Urban Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant.
Second.
Did the Healthy Neighborhood Advisory Committee approve?
We did.
Okay. Park Commission? And Finance?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this, Jay?
Oh, shoot, it's not that. It's something else. I got to bring up the right document. Oh, but I saw Scott waving his hand, so maybe he would like to talk while I'm looking for it.
Well, I just, I was to ask that Finance, how many trees would be included? And there's 120 trees included in the grant application, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, so basically what this is, is it's a grant that helps us plant some urban trees in the terraces and parks, in places where we think they need, we need them to try to get to our tree canopy goals. And this is, this is a rather substantial grant and will help us plant a lot of things. And I think it's going to be a good thing for the city.
But I have a question, because this grant is for $177,000, isn't it? Seventy, so, and Scott, you mentioned that 123 is per year, or?
No, for the total, there's different components to the grant.
Okay.
From there, there's.
Okay, okay, okay.
There's a planning component, which will talk about a specific management plan. There's a proactive maintenance component, which allows us to proactively maintain the trees, including pruning and mulching, site preparation. There's some boundaries that can be established within the parks so that we can identify areas that need to be worked on. There's a training component to it, which includes staff training and seminars. Then that tree planting component, which includes 120 trees. So it's a, as I mentioned before, it's really a comprehensive program, which includes tree planting, along with other management objectives to help us achieve that canopy goal of 30% by 2050. So there's a lot of different components to the grant, including tree planting.
Okay. And can you explain to the, because, you know, why do we need to approve this grant? Because we have plenty of grants that they don't come to council. Why this one has to come to council?
Well, as part of the grant application, it needs to have a resolution, which approves, you know, the council approves the application. So that's one of the items that needs to be included.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so any question? No? All those in favor of resolution R-46-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Scott. So next, we move to Housing Advisory Committee.
We meet on June 10th.
Okay. Land Smart Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
We meet next on June 13th.
Okay. Okay, no, we don't have that. Okay. So next, we move to Standing Committees' reports, and we are going to start with Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, I will, well, actually, I'll start with my report.
Okay.
Misty shared that the ARPA report was filed with the Treasury Department. We have to basically say how much money's been spent, how much money is allocated in order to meet the requirements of that money. And we're still on track to spend that money within the requirements that the government has set out. So that's on track. We got the guidance for the shared revenue maintenance of effort.
Oh, is that one of those?
So our, with the shared revenue increase from the state government last year, it came with a lot of stipulations of things that we have to do to maintain, like, good standing and maintain that amount of money. So for this whole entire time, we did not know what those, how that would be implemented. So we finally have that guidance, and Misty is working on it. I think she has to submit the report by July 1st. So she's working on that. And we already talked about the audit. Oh, no, we didn't. The annual audit will be issued on Friday, and there'll be a finance presentation as soon as that's prepared. And then mentioned the rating call for Moody's because of the debt issuance. And the sale of the debt that we approved last time will be approved, the actual sale will be approved at the next finance meeting, and I believe it comes to council as well. And now we'll move to resolutions. I move approval of Resolution R-AD24, purchase of eight vehicle speed feedback signs.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
So this is something that we talked about for a while, but it's basically purchasing those permanent speed feedback signs. The plan for the eight is to have two per district, and the locations to be decided by the Alders in the district in coordination with staff. $42,000 total to purchase all eight. There is an ongoing cost for the data analysis for it, so that's also in the budget. And yeah, it's an effective way to address speeding. It's shown to reduce speeding on roads that they're installed on.
Okay, so do you know when, if we order those speeds?
He said, like, four to six weeks? I think Tim said.
Four to six weeks, okay.
Pretty soon, or I don't know if Ross knows more.
Ross is here, Ross.
Yeah, four to six weeks.
Okay. Oh, have a, oh, Jay?
Yeah, we have, we already have several of these throughout the city. And I'm wondering, are we currently collecting data from those so we can see when people are speeding, even though we don't know who they are, but we know that they are doing that?
Yes, the ones that we have right now do collect data, and these permanent ones will as well.
So how do we, how is that data get transmitted back to wherever, I mean, where's the apparatus that it gets transmitted to?
So the ongoing payment that Alder Gerhart mentioned is to a company called All Traffic Solutions, and they basically provide a software platform that has a map that shows where all of the speed feedback signs are, as well as all of the StatTrack, which is our stealth system that doesn't show the speed to the driver. It shows where we've done all of those studies as well. And then you can generate reports and get different statistics that you want out of that software platform.
So does each of these signs have a digital modem in them, a cell modem, so that they can transmit that data?
Yes, I believe they have LTE data.
I see.
Okay, any other question? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-82-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I move approval of Resolution R-8224, amending the 2024 general fund budget LTE Police Services intern.
Second.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
And I'll let the deputy chief, since he's been here.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Matt Leahy. Traditionally, the police department has had a unpaid internship program, fairly successful. We've hired a couple of our current officers and actually one future officer out of the unpaid internship program. However, we're facing a highly competitive and dwindling candidate pool. However, during our hiring processes, we do see some candidates that offer some level of promise. However, they're probably not in their life, current life stage, that they've garnered enough life experience or job experience, or they're not in a position at a university or higher education that offers an internship program that can correspond to requisite credits for their degree. So we're wanting to kind of evolve and modify some of our practices and offer a paid internship as opposed to the traditional unpaid internship in hopes to get a little bit more interest in the police department, the internship program, and hopefully develop one of these promising younger candidates, incorporate them into the department, and hopefully at some point, make them successful in their law enforcement goals, whether it's with the City of Pittsburgh or another community that they see as a better fit. But anything to try to increase some level of success with our hiring practices.
Okay, Jay?
How much do we, are we expecting to pay an intern?
So the state, I'm sorry, the city rate for any paid internship is $177 an hour.
Nicole?
I, in general, hate unpaid internships. I find them quite unfair, and I love that you're bringing forward paying someone who's giving us their time and work. But to kind of ask comparatively, is this something that other municipalities also offer a paid police?
There are other police departments across, not only Dane County, but across the state, that offer paid internships.
Awesome, thank you.
And our fire department also offers paid internships, so it only seemed fair. Go ahead.
I'll add, in addition to the fire department, there are three interns that are hired each year, and the engineering department, one in the forestry department, and then also this year, there's one being hired in human resources as well.
Yeah.
They're all paid at the same rate, yep.
Joe?
I'm sorry, I should know this, and I could probably look it up, but I'll ask since you're here. What's the educational requirement for, to be a police officer in Pittsburgh?
So in order to be a certified law enforcement officer, you must attain 60 college credits within five years of hire. You don't have to have the college credits right from the jump. And your only age requirement is 18 years of age. But we've seen the younger the candidates are in the hiring interview panels, their inexperience of life just kind of shows. And those are those candidates that we're kind of trying to focus on a little bit more to try to encourage to come back. We've had two recent hiring processes where, between both police officer candidates, as well as part-time dispatch candidates, that we've seen some promise in some of those candidates. So we're going to work with human resources to invite those candidates back, as well as open it up to the public to see who would be interested.
Just one follow-up question is, what's the timeframe you expect an intern to be with you?
Well, we've, the budget amendment that we had was starting June 1st through the remainder of this year. I think that's a little bit too aggressive, that we're going to be able to get somebody starting June 1st. But I would say, within the next month, we should probably be able to get somebody in the department working with us.
Okay, thank you. I support this amendment.
I have a question, Matt. What are the typical activity that an intern in the police department do?
Sure. So historically, because the intern was specifically tied to the college or university that they were attending, they had specific requirements. However, on average, they were doing ride-alongs with police officers, they were doing department projects, they were working, helping us plan our community night out, they were doing sit-alongs with our dispatchers, working with investigations, all aspects of the police department they were working on.
Opposed to the different, you know, activity of the department that you have within the police department?
Correct.
You know what I mean, like, okay. Any other question?
Quick question, I just.
Okay, Donna, and then Bill. Okay, Donna, go ahead.
I was just wondering, definitely support this. I'm curious, is there, in addition to like the activities that you just mentioned that they do, is there any sort of curriculum that they, that you all write or follow as they come, that they complete in conjunction with the activities that you just mentioned, Mayor?
So any curriculum that they would have would be tied directly to the university that they would be attending, if they are in college at the time. If they were not in college and just looking for an internship and exposure to law enforcement, there wouldn't be necessarily a curriculum. There'd be, there is a corresponding job description and some of the tasks that the candidate would be participating in.
Gotcha. And then, just one more question. So and then with that, let's say they didn't have any college experience at this time, and they went through the program, would that set them up better to go to college then? And are those activities aligned with kind of what they would experience should they choose to move forward in their educational process?
Sure, obviously, there's a little, there's a little bit of separation between what somebody's actually going to be learning in college and what you're actually going to be doing in, on a day-to-day job within law enforcement. One of the things that we're hoping to do is provide them exposure to the department so that they understand some of the policies, the procedures, the protocols, some of the stuff that you don't necessarily learn in an undergraduate degree, or even a technical degree, or even, for that matter, at the academy. A lot of those things aren't taught, and I think a lot of times, it gives the candidate a leg up. The other thing that we can help potential, the intern with, to make them more successful in the hiring process, a lot of people fall short in understanding exactly what a police department's actually looking for in a candidate, helping them through a lot of the paperwork, a lot of the processes, a lot of what's going to be asked of them during the hiring processes. Some of those things can get worked out during that internship to make them more successful in the hiring process. Because at the end of the day, they're still going to have to apply to be a police officer if they choose to within the police department. To make them more successful in college, that's going to be their choice. If they're choosing to be a police officer, they're going to have to go to college at some point. At least they'll understand what's going to be expected of them. And if they get hired by the city, they'll also get their tuition reimbursement possibilities through the city as well. So there's, there could be benefits on all avenues as far as the program's concerned. Thank you. You bet.
Bill?
Yeah, so the timeframe for this was basically the second half of the year.
Correct.
So like, is that, is that typical? Every year, you want somebody from June through December?
So right now, it's really going to be based on our salary savings. And because we've had a decent amount of salary savings, we're hoping to get up to full staffing, so we don't have this problem necessarily. So it's going to be kind of dependent on there, and we're going to have to talk internally as a department, as command staff, to see if this is something that we are going to want to add to our, just our standing budget item, or personnel request from year to year, or if we're going to rely on those salary savings.
Okay, so it seems like a good idea, so. Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R-82-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
So next, we move to Personnel Committee. Any update?
Yes, give me one second, hold on. Sorry. Okay, so yeah, we met on, our last meeting was April 24th, and we talked about a couple different positions. So we had added the classification of the Fire Battalion Chief, and adding that classification, basically for a pay upgrade to grade M as a non-exempt classification. And this classification works alongside with the crews working the 24-hour shifts. We also added a classification of Principal Engineer to pay grade M as a new exempt classification. And we also looked at the, amending the paid parental leave policy. The current policy included represented employees and defined like the two-week period as the hours someone is like regularly and consistently assigned hours in the two-week period. So an example of that would be, this would be 96 hours for represented fire employees and kind of 80 hours for all other individual, like, permanent, full-time employees.
Okay.
And then last, oh, sorry, one more thing. And then the last thing would be, we just looked at the national, the natural progressions to be approved administratively. So basically, looking at those classifications established to have levels from like one to three. And in these cases, the opportunity to reclass someone to the higher level if they meet those qualifications automatically. And the need is there, and it's included in their kind of departmental budget. And then the reclassification is pending approval by the city administrator in consultation with the department heads in human resources.
Okay. Any question for Donna? No? Okay, thank you, Donna. So next, we move to Public Safety and Human Services.
Yeah, we got graduation parties and birthday parties coming out the wazoo for our parks. Just a reminder that Monday, May 27th, is the annual Memorial Day observance up the street near the, at our Veterans Memorial Park. Ten Pin Alley is going to be starting up their events on the outdoor patio on May 15th, and that's going to go through most of the summer, and then a Grace and that's going to go through most of the summer, and then a Grace Hospice is having their race for grace on June second.
Okay, thank you. So next, we move to item nine, unfinished business. We don't have anything. And then, ten, new business, and we have a direct referral, so this is a finance committee, so.
I move approval of resolution R-9324, approving change orders for legal services with cyber law offices.
Second.
Is finance committee approved?
Finance approved.
What is this?
So this is, we've actually already approved these funding, these funds. This is basically just approving the vendors of cyber law offices selected. So, just something we have to go through because the amounts issued are high enough that it has to go back to council.
Okay, any question, comments? No? All those in favor of resolution R-93-24, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to item B, and we have an action on a claim. So, an action on the claim is Nicholas Early. So we have Nick here on, where is, oh, there is. So Nick, hi, can you, would you like to say something to the council?
I mean, I've written two different letters to you guys already, one on the claim form, and then one on another email to Adam. So I don't know if you've all had the chance to read it or not, have you, or have you not?
Yes, we read, but I don't know if you want to add something additional to that, to your letter?
I mean, it's just a very simple thing. You put a family with two young children in one of the worst spots that you can never imagine. You, and the company that you work with took away all access to cash that we had. We had several loans, credit card payments, all this stuff that we had to stop. I mean, this just cost us hours and hours and hours of hassle and time, embarrassment. We both went out to lunch that day, and then our cards declined. You have that jackass Jack over there, like on social media, calling us, you know, liars, you know, over social media, on your own page. You have another lady on finance telling me, I don't understand what's going on, when she sends us fifteen thousand dollars when he took thirty-seven thousand dollars. This has been handled so, so terribly. And, I mean, just an embarrassment on how you guys have handled this as a whole. I just, I really don't know what to say, like, letting you guys off, I think it's easy on five thousand dollars. I just want to be done with this. This has just been hours of my time, and I'm just, and I'm just done with it. And if I need to take this to court, I'll take it to court.
Okay, thank you. So next, Adam Sayer is going to make some comments about this claim. And then we are going to go to close session.
Yes, thank you. I think as Nick said, there was, on March twentieth, we had a billing error in our utility department. So that was a process that caused incorrect amounts of utility transactions to occur. So people got hit with these transactions that, through our, you know, PNC, who is our utility provider, who kind of does those transactions for us. So unfortunately, that occurred, it occurred across multiple accounts. We were able to correct many of those very quickly. So there's two types of transactions here. We have credit card transactions. Those are able to kind of stop and refund immediately. But the ones that had bank account transactions, those are the ones that we could reverse, but it took time to go through the banking process. The vast majority of these issues were for, issues were for less than a hundred dollars, and most of those were resolved in a couple days. We did have one person, Nick, who had a larger amount drawn in error. We did work with Nick to correct that as fast as we could. You know, we do apologize for the inconvenience. It was, it was unfortunate, we, you know, it, I sympathize, sympathize with him. It was, it was an unfortunate error on our part, and it was a mistake. It was through a IT financing process that, where we thought this communication with PNC, P, excuse me, PSN was turned off. For whatever reason, it wasn't turned off, and it kept kind of communicating, and that's what caused the withdrawals. However, there was an inconvenience to Nick, and that's why we're here tonight with this claim. I'm not sure if Valerie has anything to add or not.
Valerie, do you want to add anything now, or you want to discuss in closed session?
Well, I would leave it to this body to decide if you'd like to convene into closed session. Certainly have that opportunity, as it's been appropriately noticed on the agenda. Happy to render my legal advice in a closed session, or I guess that would be my recommendation. But again, that would be up to this body to decide if that's the route you want to go.
Okay, so, Jay.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What was the actual utility bill supposed to be?
So Misty, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. So we, as part of this, we do some type of kind of reconciliation as, was that Misty or someone? Sorry. Nope, okay, sorry, I thought I heard somebody. We do, we kind of pause it as we do meter reads as part of the process. And so we, what we do is we have IT turn off kind of the communication with PSN, who does your utility billing. So PSN is a large company, they basically check in.
I don't mean to be rude, but I asked a question. What, I don't need all that background, I just want to know what was his utility bill supposed to be?
Ah, I believe there wasn't supposed to be a bill, and I was trying to explain that the communication was not supposed to happen, and it did. That's what I was trying to explain.
So he, he doesn't owe the city anything?
He's current on all his bills, as of today.
Okay, we are going to go to closed session, so who can move to closed session?
The total was thirty-seven thousand dollars that was taken out.
I'll move to go on to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen eighty-five one G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved.
Second.
All those in favor of going to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are moving to closed session. Okay. Nick, you need to leave the.
I made a motion.
I need a motion to reconvene into open session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor of reconvening into open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay.
I move to approve the claim in part in the amount of five hundred dollars contingent on the signing of a full release.
Second.
All those in favor of the, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. So next, we move to item F, update discussion of Fitchburg levy limit referendum. So this is a discussion item only, no action taken, okay? So.
Adam, while you're getting set up here, I can, do you want me to cover kind of those three points that were taken away from the committee of the whole? Or do you have those that you're going to address?
Three questions, you mean?
Yeah.
I have those in the presentation.
Excellent, then I'll just let you go ahead and take the reins.
Okay. So I have a very brief presentation here tonight. So, based on the last meeting, it looks like we're looking at that November referendum timeline. There are some critical dates that, to make the council aware of, and then one of those is around August fifteenth. So that is when DOR releases a lot of their information related to equalized values. And we need that information in order to finalize the question. I'll have a sample question, you'll see in a couple seconds here, but that information is necessary. So that's a critical date for us. So, as we kind of keep talking about this, we technically, we can't vote on that question until we have that data. That's the one challenge we've kind of run into as part of this process of, we need to make sure that data is going to be there in August. So, we can talk about a question right now, we can talk about what our intentions are, but you can't actually finalize that question until August. These dates aren't really changed from the last meeting, August twenty-seventh will be the last council meeting where you can make a vote on that, and the question deadline to the county is August twenty-eighth, and I'll open for questions here once I'm done. There were three questions in the last meeting that we, we didn't have answers for. One of those was the budget process. That was a critical item, I know, for a couple people up here. As we've talked about this, we believe we would do one budget as normal, and then the referendum would be a kind of omnibus one amendment at the very end. So we believe that, hopefully you can see what I'm doing here. We, we believe that we can still do one budget process like we normally would do, and then we do one large budget amendment at the end. So that won't create any additional work for staff. Second question was regarding the COPS grant deadline. That was September first, and the resolution that was approved by the council. We do have some flexibility in that grant as well. So we don't believe that, that September first deadline will be a major hurdle. Obviously, the sooner that we kind of, kind of get that in place, it's, the better. But we won't lose on that funding just by missing that September first, twenty-twenty-four deadline. So we, we do have flexibility on that. And then finally, there was a question about how many households are in the Madison School District, because we're probably competing with the Madison School District on a referendum. And there are approximately forty-five percent of our residential households are in that district, so roughly, roughly forty-five percent. So, not quite half, but almost half. So, just showing this of when the day comes and you're voting on a potential referendum, this is what the question is going to look like. So, it's a lot of requirements here from the state on how this is worded. So we did have this type of sample question reviewed by DOR. DOR is still taking a look at it, so we haven't finalized it with DOR, but this is kind of the general format of it. And we've got some pretty significant kind of blanks that are in there. Those Xs are, you know, what kind of cues into that August deadline. Those are the numbers that we need to, we need to kind of fill in, and we don't have that data to fill that in until, until August. So, you can, we can talk about, you know, whether it be positions, transit, operating costs of police facility, you know, whatever else. But we can't finalize that question until we have that data from the state in August. So, once again, I've kind of emphasized that we can't finalize that question until the Department of Revenue Information is provided to us. We think that's going to be around August fifteenth, give or take in there. Potentially, and I'm not sure if staff is suggesting this, there could be some type of resolution of intent, basically stating that we'll be moving forward with a referendum in November. The challenge here is, you know, we can announce we potentially might be doing a referendum, but until that vote is final, it's actually not set in stone. And the challenge becomes too of, when we start getting questions, and the good example that's going to be, you know, if a referendum is approved, what's, what's the impact on my home? Without that data, we're going to receive in August, we can't give a certainty in that answer. The second issue too is if the council votes on something now, whether it's a resolution of intent, and say, two months from now, you have different feelings on something, or your thoughts have changed, it really complicates that message for the voters. It really makes it difficult to say, you know, you kind of get one shot to roll out the educational campaign. And if that message is changing at all during the process, it just makes the education part of this kind of more, more challenging. But if we did some type of resolution of intent, we could announce to people, hey, we're looking at something in November, keep your eyes peeled, something will be coming here. We'll, during that time as well in June and July, we could be doing some additional committee of the whole discussions, kind of fleshing out exactly what we want to have in here, working through those details as well. And then behind the scenes, staff and our consultant could be drafting the website contacts, contacts, getting up the infographics, kind of getting some of those basic data sets available, so we're ready to roll most likely here in, in August. Regarding outreach, this is something that will come back to the council, will want your approval on how we're doing outreach. So as part of this, we'll have an outreach plan with, with the consultants. Our initial plan, as we've kind of talked internally, and this is very high level, there would be three informational mailers that would go out as part of this. Both of those would be in, those would be in English and in Spanish. And as of right now, we're looking at six public information, public informational sessions as well. Four would be in-person with, with translation, and then two would be virtual as well. So that's kind of our initial plan, but we would come back to you with kind of what the overall plan is, so you can, you can review it, provide comments, and then ultimately adopt how we're going to move forward with this. So that's, that's what I had for you tonight. We can go into details like we did last time, if you'd like, about just what a referendum could look like. But right now, it's just what staff has learned as part of this with that August fifteenth date. That is, that's, that's kind of a critical date for us now, and knowing that more in talking to DOR, that, you know, we can't finalize that question until August. And I, not to keep harping on that point, but that was a big item for us to learn in, in talking with DOR.
Okay, question, Nicole.
I have two questions, and I'll make them very quick. The first one, in some of the wording, I noticed like, police facility was referenced, where I kind of immediately am like, would people think they're kind of voting on that topic? So like, if we have feedback on this, you know, if we wanted to replace police facility with safety priorities, or things like that, do we just send that to you all, or is this so early that like, it's not even worth looking at this now, and we'll have time later to get feedback?
I think if you have comments, I'd take them regardless of the, of the time. So if you do have comments, I think we're always willing to take, take the comments. You know, we did have three type of sample questions we, we were looking at. One was very high level, and then we had one that was kind of a hybrid, and then one that was very detailed. The reality is, in my understanding, is the question has to be clear enough the voter understands what, what they're voting for.
Sure.
But there's probably flexibility in exactly how it's worded.
Awesome. My second question was, you said you would still be able to just do one budget? So would the budget be, assuming the referendum doesn't pass, and then the edit would be if the referendum did?
Yep. So the one budget would be just whatever capacity we have. And then if the referendum would pass, that would be one large kind of budget amendment at the end.
I have a question, Adam. You mentioned there, ongoing police department facility operating cost and other city operating. What does it mean, other city operating and capital cost?
Sure.
So, in working with Ellers, our financial consultants, they've aided us in crafting the potential questions. That does allow some measure of flexibility for the city. You know, in the event, say, there were, you know, perhaps with the grant funding, you know, that'll be associated with the police officer position, could that be utilized under this question in an alternate way while that grant funding is, you know, is still there? So we would be budgeting for the, obviously, the cost of the five police officers. There would be grant funding to offset the cost, so therefore, that full funding, could that potentially be utilized elsewhere? As an example, they're just obviously trying to create some measure of flexibility for the city.
I don't know, I don't understand that logic, but, I don't know, maybe it's me, but I don't, I don't get it. I thought it maybe was, we are using that to cover the gap, that we're, the deficit, the deficit. Okay, I will feel more comfortable with that, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so Adam, you said the, the question can't be finalized until August fifteenth, but it can take, we can have a question in this form and just fill in the Xs at that time, right? Or is it more, is there more to it than that?
I mean, ultimately, the question's going to look, when it gets to that point, it'll look something similar to what you're seeing on the screen right now. I mean, you can continue the conversations, and you could do a resolution of intent saying, here's what we're intending to do in, in August with that official vote. The only challenge I would just raise is, once you kind of adopt that resolution, if you, if you did that of an intent of doing something, you really need to follow through, and there can't be any changes. So you've got to be really certain, if you're doing it, you're making that vote in, in May, that nothing's going to change in between. Just because, once you get out there, if this is what we're doing, and if all of a sudden you veer off that path, it's confusing to the voters, and, I mean, you lose trust ultimately.
Adam, I have a question, maybe you explain when I was out. So, when you mentioned it's limited to an X percentage, what is that percentage of what? No, but what is that percentage? Is the percentage of?
That's the net new construction.
Yeah.
Oh.
Is what that number will be.
Okay.
Which then will translate to a levy of X.
Okay, okay, send me, and still the increase in the levy?
And I can send this presentation as well, once we're done tonight.
Okay, that one is, okay, okay.
If I recall correctly, there may be another factor that goes in there in addition to the net new construction?
I think there is. It's more complicated, I think, than that, but generally, it's net new construction.
Yes, that's the simplest way to say it.
So that one is understandable for the people that are going to, you know what I mean, because it's even confusing to us, so I want to say that.
This is the statutory requirement.
Really?
Yes.
Oh, my lord.
Part of the reason we wanted to show it tonight, at least to make you aware of when we come back, you're, you weren't looking at going, what, what does this say? Because it is, I mean, it's supposed to be clear, but there's also parameters you have to follow from the state of how it has to be worded.
No, no, I know, but it's, it's very confusing. Okay, Gabriela.
I find the, so, given how complicated our public transit is and how much things are in flux, I find like the improvements to the east-west transit system to be very confusing, even by my understanding of what we're doing. So, I wonder if we can just say something more general, like improvements to public transit system? something more general, like improvements to public transit system? Because I don't know exactly if we even know what that would be at this point. So I think we need the funding to do it, but.
We can check with Ellers on that. I think that's probably appropriate.
Okay.
I would say, instead of police department, I would say the police facility, operating cost, or public safety facility, it sounds. Because it's confusing, police department facility, you know what I mean? I don't know. I know, you know what I mean? I don't know. More general.
We have time to wordsmith this.
Well, they are asking questions, so.
We can certainly have that continued conversation.
Yeah.
And, Adam, are we still sensing that the council is in the November referendum camp?
That Madison number was higher than I was hoping, but yeah.
Would August even have been an option, given that August 15th?
We would have to utilize existing data.
Yeah.
Which then means it will modify in August. So it does complicate things a bit if we were to proceed with an August referendum in light of this information.
I'm still team November.
And on top of the letters going out as well, from the Assessing Department as well, which wouldn't really correlate as well.
Jay?
Well, if we had, if we were going with the August date, we wouldn't even really be able, I mean, I'm sure that question would have to be to the county by when.
You'd have next meeting to vote on that question.
Yeah. So that's not going to happen. So with the November election, you said that we won't have the information we need until August 15th. So would we be able to vote on it on August 27th? Or would we have to wait until the next, the first meeting in September? And then the next question would be, what's the county deadline for the November election?
Yeah, you'd have to vote on it on August 27th, and then we would send it to the county on the 28th. The deadline to the county is the 28th.
Of course it is.
So we can vote before that, isn't it? With that intent?
Well, we'd want to work through the timing with Ellers and DOR. I mean, could it be possible that there's a referral out, whatever the meeting, would that be the August 13th? Is the 27th the actual second meeting in August?
Yeah.
Okay. So perhaps there'd be a referral on the 13th, and then once the data was released on the 15th, we could update the referral with the appropriate information. And then that would afford council the ability, as well as the community, to see it in advance of the meeting. And then ideally, the vote obviously will happen on the 27th. I mean, but we can certainly clarify the logistics on it.
So what, other than finance, what committees would we refer this to?
Finance, finance. I don't think that we need to send it to other committees. Finance, isn't it?
I think that would ultimately be a council call. I guess we'd want to determine what are the goals and objectives of referral to other committees, I think.
Would it need to be referred to finance?
No.
Ultimately, I don't know if it even needs to be referred to finance. I mean, obviously, the body, the members of finance are on this body, so.
Yeah. With, when there's decisions like that in finance, where it's like really a council discussion, I actually usually defer to the council anyway.
Right. And that could happen as well.
Because it's a council decision.
Yeah, let's do it to council.
So just in terms of the timing, I still support November. And the fact that the budget seems to be something that we can work on, and the fact that the COPS grant even is something that's flexible, really solidifies that in my mind. Because that, those are the two things that were concerns to me. And yeah, so I feel much better about it now.
They're always in a concern, me, about the 45%. It's a big number. That's it. Dave?
If you wait till November, doesn't Misty have to be doing kind of like double, double work? Because she doesn't, because she doesn't, you know, doesn't know if the referendum is going to pass or not. If you had it in August, we'd have a clear path for her. That's.
No, we already have a plan. So Chad's going to.
Yeah, we've talked it over as staff, including Misty. And the process, while there will be a bit of additional work, what we would do is basically do the budget process as if there was no referendum. That's how council would treat it. And then there would be an omnibus amendment that would be included in that budget, that would include the things within the referendum. And if the referendum were to pass, if council ultimately decides to do a referendum, then that omnibus amendment would be included then into the budget, and council would vote. If a referendum is not, I guess we would know probably by the time we release the budget, if there was not going to be a referendum. But if the referendum did not pass, then that omnibus amendment would be withdrawn.
Right. Thank you, Chad. I appreciate the explanation.
Sure.
Ma'am, Mayor, I share your concern with the Madison, with the double referendum. My preference would be August, but I don't think I'm in the majority on that.
It's a tough call. Yeah. So, okay. Any other questions? So what else do you need from us tonight?
I don't need anything tonight. We wanted to update you on just where things are at. If you have comments, just pass them along to Chad or myself, and then we'll keep the conversation kind of going here. I'm not sure what, Chad and I haven't had a chance to talk of when we're going to bring it back to council for discussion, but probably sooner than later.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we have some time. That's part of it. We wanted to make sure you had the information, kind of looking at what the question might look like, but just letting you know, we don't need to make this decision right now, and we can't, quite honestly. So.
So we are going to, the idea is going to November?
Well, that's really the only decision that could be made tonight. If there was a desire to do August, you would need to let us know tonight.
This is what I am asking, because.
We can get a question put together for action on the 27th. If you're feeling like November is where you want to go, then just let us know to November, and we'll keep the council updated and the conversation going in preparation for a final question in August for vote.
If you're asking for input, I have no interest in moving to August. I like the November timeline.
Okay. Jim?
August.
November.
Jay?
Well, it doesn't seem like we have a choice but to do November. I just don't see how August works in a real world scenario.
We can use all data, so.
Yeah, I lean November.
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 August.
August, so.
Okay.
I'll take that to mean November. I think it was 6-2. That, if my math is correct.
Yeah, I don't vote, isn't it?
Correct. I mean, you can offer your opinion.
My opinion is, I am concerned about the 45%. It's a big number.
Well, we'll plan for November, so we'll continue working. And then you'll see periodic agenda items either at Committee of the Whole and our council to keep this body informed.
Okay.
And thank you, by the way.
Thank you, thank you, Adam. Okay, so now we are in Mayo's report. So, you know, because, so as Joe mentioned, it's Friday, it's bike to work, 7 o'clock, Mackey Park. And then we are going to come here to City Hall. We are going to have a small ceremony because recognizing a couple of five new bicycle-friendly businesses. Those businesses are the Boys and Girls Club of Dane County, the Mackenzie Regional Workforce Center, Chocolate Shop Ice Cream, Encompass Health Rehab Hospital, Hop House Fish Bar, Ruta Baga Paddle Sport. So these are the five. So we are going to be recognizing that day too. Oh, Ansari's Equipment, they moved from bronze to silver. What else? I continue working on the CIP. You know, so I have another meeting with Chad and Misty. So working on the, you know, on the new project. It's still a work in progress. What else? Tomorrow, there is going to be, the police is doing a war ceremony, 6:30 here. So everyone is invited. Also, on Thursday, is a mixer that the Chamber of Commerce is organizing with other Chamber of Commerce. It's going to be in the Verona Ice, what is it? Ice field? How do you call that? I don't know. Arena, arena, yeah. I think it's at 5 o'clock. Also, I want to thank all the staff and Alder that participated in the first strategic plan work group last Thursday. Thank you, everyone. And also, you know, Adam sent you an email the other day about if you can review the survey, the link for the survey that is going to be sent to the resident about the strategic plan. You know, so we are trying to involve you guys in this process. And so far, the only person who responded to that was me. So, you know, so I will say that, yes, I know that some of you are busy. You have your work, your family. But sometimes, you know, when we send you stuff to review and to, for input, you know, try to, you know, try to make the effort to do it. Because then, you know, when we, that survey is sent to the resident, I don't want your feedback saying, oh, this survey is missing this, or that, or that. You know, you had the opportunity to review it. You didn't make any comments. So, you know, so please try to participate. So, because, you know, staff is also, you know, put a lot of effort in doing this. And we try to include you in the decision. And, you know, so we would like to have some feedback. Also, there was another, I think Adam sent another link, like three or four weeks ago, to Alders and city staff to answer some questions for the strategic plan. So, you know, I don't know if you did it, but if you have time, you still have time to do it. I will appreciate you fill out those forms too. So what else? That's it for me for now. I'm going to start with District 4.
I have nothing.
Well, I have part of Jim's update. It was great to join him on the opening of Quick Save Games. And that was very exciting to have a new business in our area. And then I participated in the Osmondson Traffic Calming Committee, which was led by Ross, and I think he did a really great job.
Okay. Donna?
Nothing pressing for me at the moment, currently, from the district.
Okay.
District 3 has been quiet, except for a lot of people who are upset about things going on with the inspiration development. So I'm sure you will hear more about that over the next few weeks.
Will do. Thank you.
Alder Jettzer and I are trying to organize a meeting with the Pembroke neighbors. There was a concern about a crash that happened at the corner of Pembroke and Raritan. And we're going to schedule a meeting soon. So we'll let you all know if anyone's paying attention. Thanks.
Thank you.
I attended the courtyard ribbon cutting on April 25th. That was the same day as that Pembroke-Raritan crash. They had tours, and we got our caricature done. That was nice. On Monday, April 29th, I attended the Wisconsin Healthy Communities Summit, which is sponsored by the Wisconsin Bike Fed. And keynote speaker was Jesse Singer, author of a book called There Are No Accidents. And I highly recommend that book. Thursday, May 2nd, actually, Alder Gerhart and I attended the Dane County Regional Housing Strategy. And I will encourage everyone to go to rhs.danecounty.gov and read through the regional housing strategy documentation. And there's at least one video that you can watch as well. It's pretty good stuff.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
So save the date, Monday, June 17th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Latino Chamber of Commerce. There will be a large public workshop for the Fishberg Teen Center, expecting about 150 people, obviously targeted towards youth. But there will be a food truck with a food voucher for everyone who participates, as well as music. And it'll be led by the high school and middle school students who are interns on the project right now. So.
Joe, can you send us an email with that?
Yeah, registration link will be coming soon. So when a flyer is there with a QR code, I will send it to council.
What was the location again, Joe?
The Latino Chamber of Commerce on Anton Drive.
3 to 7?
4 to 7 p.m.
On which day?
Monday, June 17th.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Dave?
We have a morning kickoff on Saturday. We have 19 members. We have people that are native countries, or just list a few, Jamaica, Nigeria, Cameroon, Ukraine, Mexico. So we have a wide group of gardeners with different expertise. We had a very nice community meal for the Allied Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association on Friday in the park. I just add, free bikes for kids. I've been working there the last few weekends. They've given away their allotment of bikes. So if someone is still looking for bikes, if you contact them, there are surplus or additional bikes, I think will be available, you know, starting on the 17th. And then on Friday, this Friday, bicycle repair workshop would be held at Luna by the Wisconsin Bike Federation from 4:00 to 7:00. So if you need, know anyone that needs their bike repaired, please have them show up for that. It'd be a good opportunity to get their bike fixed. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. So I want to, I forgot to announce that Memorial Day is on Monday, the 27th, at 12:30, is the date of Memorial Day observance. It's going to be at the Goldman Wayside Veteran Memorial Park. Everyone is invited. Sergeant Jonathan Parker, he's going to be the speaker. And he has chosen the people behind the heroes as his keynote theme. So everyone is invited. Bring your chair. I did it last year. It's a great event. So, May 27, 12:30. One of our own is going to be the keynote speaker. So with that announcement is, our next committee of the whole is going to be May 22nd.
Yeah, in regards to that, so just to point out for the new Alders, typically, our committee of the whole usually falls after the second council meeting of the month. But because Wednesday was the first of this month, it happens to be next week. So I just wanted to make clear that that's not typical. But it is next Wednesday at 7:00 p.m.
Do you know the topics?
Yeah, well, we're definitely going to be talking, I think, about the neighborhood plans, Greenfield and South Senator Prairie. And then Misty's going to do a presentation about CIP and financial management.
Thank you. And the next common council meeting will be May 28, 2024. So, and I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor of adjourn and say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So we are adjourning at.